They think you get this project put together, they took that all underground and not have to use the poles to do some movement.
Oh nice, okay.
I haven't talked at Pacific Power, so I don't know what their thoughts are, because we haven't gotten that project on this grant yet. We're gonna concentrate on that intersection and then we'll start the conversation with Pacific Power on what we can do with those poles. Because right now, that sidewalk could only, there's only about two feet between those power poles and curb. The area is wide enough with the poles, it's very deep. So that's what I know on that.
And then tentatively, there will be a walk-in tour of this area for the community and we'll have some signs with some information. And that would be May 25th. And information, as that becomes, um, as that date becomes finalized, we'll get that out each episode. And that's it for that, if you guys have any more questions about that.
When's this gonna start? Next year?
Well, May 15th, we'll start doing some, um, and Michelle and Sheila, that was a dubstep because that just happened as I was walking down the stairs to this meeting, I got the phone off in the engineer. So, May 15th, we'll start doing some survey and that will give us the basis to start the design on that. Because if, as you guys know, the way that the roads come in there, there's about four or five different slopes you're gonna have to deal with to cut that intersection incorrectly. So we'll have to do some survey and we'll look at all the corners there, so we can redo the ADA ramps and make that all ADA finals.
So, next summer, probably.
And this grant only covers the engineering, and then we submit all of this to try to get a grant to actually do the work on it.
Oh, so if we don't get a grant on it, then, or something?
Right, well, we'll have the engineering done, so it's all shovel ready.
Yeah, alright.
So we'll just keep trying.
Shovel ready.
And it makes, it makes it, uh, the grant committees look at that a lot better than just a project that has no design to it.
Right.
Yeah, and the one we're trying is the Safe Routes to Schools grant.
And that's to physically do.
Physically do, right. Any other questions, or?
Okay, well, that's it, you can close that and go back to the little meeting that T F B. Oh, there's Nick.
This is our.
Hi, Nick.
Can you hear us? Okay.
So where's our plan?
Is there any more on the DLC grant? Do you have any other questions?
Over here's Delbert saying.
He's talking about something else now.
This is Delbert.
I think we're good on that.
Alright, we'll move on down. Uh, town, what do you, urban renewal plan, Michelle?
Uh, I'm so excited, and we have Nick Green on the phone with us, on the line with us. Uh, we have been working on the urban renewal plan together, which is a very lengthy process. And, um, I am going to, Nick, I don't have any of the attachment, sorry, so you'll have to bring up the, um, we have the, the, the map, we've got all of the, like, different, um, the urban renewal report. And we have the Lakeview urban renewal plan in a printout, um, but I don't have the, um, financial model. So you'll, if you could share that on the screen so everybody can see that and you can walk them through it. Um, but everything else, they've got printed. One of the concerns is that, um, the optics of the Lake County Fairgrounds is, uh, we don't want, uh, there's somehow we've gotta take that out. Except for the part where the, um, green cement company is gonna be. And the river that goes to the, on the top, like, to the north of that, if we can keep that in there. But somehow we need to take that out, because we don't want the county thinking that we're gonna do anything weird with their property.
Well, no.
And it's like, Charlie, can you go ahead and tell you?
A lot of it is that the fair, the county and the fairgrounds have already made a plan to use that area for a new pavilion, parking space, and that, and that we present an urban renewal plan that says we're gonna put in housing. It's gonna cause some, um, concern. And I think it, so, as far as I'm concerned, it needs to go out.
So, couple of things, the extent of the urban area are up to you. And the reason it was shown in the map is that it's one big tax lot. So, what we may need to do is work with the county assessor to see if we can create a tax lot, uh, a separate tax lot for the green cement area and have that removed from the rest of the county. I would expect they're gonna wanna do that anyway, if they're planning to sell that. And I don't know if they're planning to sell it or lease it.
I believe they leased it.
It's on a lease.
It's on a lease.
Okay, I mean typically when a public agency leases land or buildings to a commercial enterprise, that commercial enterprise is going to be paying property taxes. So, the, it would be in the county's interest to create a separate tax lot for the portion of the land they're leasing, so that that can be taxed to the business. Because as a, as a going concern, even though it is on heavily owned land, it should be contributing to the tax base. So I think that would be the easy way for us to create a separate tax lot, do a separate legal description, just to encompass that piece, and then we can remove the rest of it. Would that work?
Yeah, that would, that would be fine, as long as we took out the pavilion area.
Well, I think, actually, Nick, I kinda talked a little bit to, uh, Dave Knowles about this when this first came about. And I believe that, that's their plan, because he told me that they were, they will have to, uh, pay taxes on that land, because it's a change of use, even though that the county owns it, excuse me, owns it. Uh, now that they're creating income from it, that it goes back on the tax laws. So they would have to, in my thoughts, they would have to create a new tax law for that. So they're paying taxes on that one piece instead of all the programs.
Right.
So, that, that's what, if I remember right, the que, uh, conversation I had with Dave Knowles was they were gonna do something where that's back on the tax laws.
That's, that's a fairly simple change, we can make that adjustment, I'll come to it. I'll work with Michelle again with the assessor's office, and then we'll reprint a new map that reflects that tax lot, and we'll just remove the rest of it.
And he did try to remove that portion, and the software wouldn't work. He was trying to turn the color, yeah, and then he tried to select it, because that was part of my question too earlier.
Okay.
Were there any other comments on the map besides that one?
Not that I'm aware of, it was mainly that area. Because we, when Sheila and I talked to you about it, you had it fixed.
So, um, we didn't put in it, in it at all, um, Red Rock, or what is now, uh, formerly known as Red Rock. I'm trying not to say that. So that's not in the U R A either, but I know they're gonna be doing some constructions on there, Nick. But that's just a general piece of information for you and the council.
Next renewal, next renewal.
It's Lakeview R and G.
Yeah.
Lakeview R G is their.
Their name for that facility.
Yep.
We, we looked a little bit.
That was in the calendar, remember, we looked at, we put it in.
But I believe the area that they're developing, they have very cleverly removed both from the city limits and the urban growth boundary. So that it's not.
That was the.
That, that's the piece across the street you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, that's, this is next right here.
Where, where next sits is actually in the city limits, that is.
Yeah, they were annexed in.
But remember, we were trying to put that piece above it, into it, then work it in.
Yeah, this is out, this is outside, it can't go in.
That's the outside of urban growth boundary right there.
So do you want us to try to get next renewables included if we can get it in under, you're fine for land area, it would be just checking assessed value, to see if we can get it in under your cap?
Are they not paying, are they not paying anything for five years, or is that the concrete?
No, I, I think they're gonna be doing some more development in there. I don't know what it, what it is, if it's adding value or getting rid of stuff, or both. I, I just don't know.
They're doing both.
They're doing both.
They're doing both.
So, I, I don't know if you, if you guys wanna put it in there, I, it's up to you.
Is there any reason we wouldn't?
He's the man to ask.
Is there any reason we wouldn't put it in?
Um, it depends on the assessed value, let me just check and see if I can pull it up real quick. Um, the only, the only disadvantage is that it may bring you up to your 25% cap, or pretty close to it, which means you wouldn't be able to do any amendments to your plan area. Uh, that's the downside. But if you're satisfied you've got enough properties included in the plan area that you don't anticipate doing amendments to the boundaries, it's not gonna hurt you.
So if we're taking out the fairground.
You, you, you have two triggers in your plan area, one is the percentage of land, and the other is percentage of assessed value. And so removing the fairground helps your percentage of land, but since it has no assessed value, it doesn't make a difference to the assessed value to have that in or out.
So.
So you're still gonna be open up against your 25% assessed value trigger.
So, so question, Nick, um, as I'm looking at the map, you and I went down 140, and then we cherry stemmed, uh, F Street and South Ninth. So, that, whatever's touching that urban renewal, the urban renewal street, that it can be amended into the urban, urban renewal agency, right?
Yes, provided that you are not exceeding your cap.
Okay, that was.
We gotta watch.
That's what I was getting to, because, it, so we, this was done on purpose, because there are a couple of those, um, hotels here. Um, so, so if we were to put in Red Rock and we meet, and that's it, that's what we're doing, the end. None of, none of the, nothing touching this could be amended in. It couldn't be amended in anywhere here or here, it would, this, it would be set, and that would not get. So, that's why it's important to know, if you really want Red Rock in there, super groovy. But it may, it may prohibit some of this development right here, that would be more housing, um, development, which is what we're wanting. So, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, on the right-hand side of the highway, there's some lots in there.
Yeah.
To be used. Maybe not on the left-hand side, but on the right-hand side, going into the town.
So anything, you know, none, none of this down off of South Ninth could be put in, or anywhere up on that South S Street right here. Anything that touches this boundary, we can amend in later, if we want to.
We could leave more lots if we wanted B Street instead of F Street?
B Street?
Mm-hmm, you know, down at the end.
Oh, way down at the end. Yeah, I suppose there's lots down there, where the old hospital used to be.
Down like where, um.
The old hospital used to be there, in the Commons.
The Commons, down, up in that area.
What is that, where is that?
No, I'm just thinking of going up, I'm just thinking of going up E Street instead of F Street.
Yeah, but you, you're not touching the current boundary on E Street.
Well, she's saying take the, instead of having this right there. Shift it over, move it over to E Street, and then go.
Where are those, um.
Because there's not a lot on that.
Where's that motel at, because maybe you could shift, turn it on Fifth, go on to E, and then come back to Ninth.
I think that would be a project, sure.
I, I don't know where the hotel's at.
The hotel was past that, it's down, is it past Eighth? Yeah, because it's down by Eighth.
Yeah, it's just a little bit, uh, north of the Eighth.
Because we would probably wanna still.
That becomes a lot of.
Between here and I.
Because if you could, you'd probably wanna still try to keep that part touching.
Well, but then you, you would just keep it on F Street, because the open lots on E are on the end of E Street.
Red Rock said, can't we just go from Fifth and just highlight all this whole area?
See, like, right here, right here on down, over here, these, these are not.
No, we did get them out here.
It's just they also, there's property across straight from the.
If U R A or U G B.
Oh, never mind.
So what if we went and just highlighted this whole?
So what U G B wants, oh, fine, oh, fine, okay, so.
What do you think about that?
Yeah, I think that would get the end of this down here, when there was a lot of that.
So Nick, if you go to, uh, go to the cherry stem and start at South Fifth Street, and go towards the canyon, to the mountains, east.
To Foothills Drive. Right?
To, towards E Street.
Yeah.
On E Street to Foothills, not quite that far.
And then go all the, and then incorporate all of those properties, all the way down to South Ninth. So that would all become like purple area, like up in the downtown area?
You would wanna go farther than Ninth, wouldn't you?
I don't know if that, I think Ninth is down at its town limits, isn't it?
Yes.
So we can go past that.
There is some areas down there that's been annexed in.
Like where the archery club is and all that stuff?
Some of that stuff, and it's really sketchy areas.
You know where the archery club is?
Yeah, that's over here.
Yeah, so that's, okay, let's take it this back, yes. There's a lot of open lots right here that could be.
It'd be something.
Those fields across, and so are doing right here. These fields across right here. Do you want to do?
It sounds like if we had Red Rock, we wouldn't be able to do changes.
Yeah, but these aren't wetlands.
They pretty much are wet.
Yeah, but it is.
Well, Red Rock's gonna be. They're talking about.
So, 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 where? Which one?
This is not, we trade back this, one or this.
Million dollars assessed value. Uh, you would still have, just under three million remaining.
Did you bring that up, what Nick said?
Up to that three million.
Yeah.
Um.
A portion of it.
Nick, can you repeat that, please?
Yeah.
Better.
Your next renewables, and I wanna double check this, uh, with your staff, just to make sure I can capture all of them. But I'm showing, in the county's assessed rolls, is about 175 acres of land. And, uh, just under a million dollars in assessed value, it's, it's 912,070 dollars. And if you were to include that, then you would still have about 30 million dollars remaining in assessed value that can be incorporated in. And you're fine from a land value standpoint, because we still have a significant amount of land area that we can add. And so you could do both, I guess is what I'm saying, it looks like you would be able to get both of them in there if you wanna do that.
My question, if, if the point of the U R A is to develop, to have the ability to develop housing, right, to advantage, uh, housing developers, what's the point of adding the Red Rock site in? Because it's an industrial plant, so it can never be housing, right?
This is a work session, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Great, uh, so, work session answer to that, which would be different if we were in like a regular session. You, you gave it the system just a little bit. Um, meaning, if you're gonna have someone putting significant commercial value into your community, and you can capture that in an urban renewal area, it will fund that, the other investments you make. So, today assessed value of that property is about a million dollars.
Right.
If they add another million dollars in improvements, and that assessed value comes up to 2 million, then all of that gain, that extra million dollars gets to be applied to your housing initiatives. And that will fund a significant amount of improvements to the housing. The other thing I would just point out is urban renewal is about addressing plight, it's not restricted to housing. Our emphasis on housing at this stage, but if you guys get to the point where you've, you've accomplished most of your housing objectives, or you're getting to the point where you feel like you've done enough to where the market is sort of taking over, and you have a healthy housing market again, and that might be 10 or 15 years from now. Then any additional value you're creating in the urban renewal area can be used for other community projects. It may require an amendment to your plan, but you wanna think strategically, none of us really know what 20 years from now looks like. And that's the light in your U R A here. So if there's something that you can do 10 years from now, 15 years from now, with the extra assessed value you're creating, uh, you could always do a plan and then incorporate that as a project or some other component of your plan later on.
Thank you.
Michelle, I was like, I should've stopped the recorder. Not, not late.
No.
Well, it sounds like we need a new map, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, is that how we're gonna start?
I, I think that, that's a decision that you make together, um, and yes, we can make another map.
Of course.
And what it sounds like is we can add in.
Red Rock, or natural.
Lakeview R and G.
I thought we were gonna add them, because they're already paying taxes, because they're commercial. Right, or wrong, Nick?
They're talking about the undeveloped.
Well, I don't know, Michelle, I, I don't know.
You're gonna, what you're capturing, just so you guys know how it works, what you're capturing is increased tax value above what happens today. So if it says a million dollars, anything new will come to the U R A, if, if it's included. Anything that's existing will still go to the other tax jurisdictions. So you're not taking anything away from them. The way I like to explain it is like deferred compensation, they're gonna delay any increases until you guys are done doing your thing with the urban renewal plan, and then they'll get to benefit from the larger tax pot that you create with those dollars.
You know, this is, Charlie, anyway, and I understand that, you know, putting that in. However, I really feel very strongly about the special districts, because the people of Lakeview and Lake County voted those districts in. And the money, for me, needs to continue to, they need to continue to receive the 3% rate, also every year.
And, and you have that flexibility and authority, if you want to, you can under levy, you don't have to take the full value of the taxes. Or you can take the full value and then issue a grant to those special districts for the equivalent of what they would've gotten before the U R A. So if, if you elect to do so, you can still do that. You just have to recognize that, to the extent you do those kinds of things, it will just make a longer repayment window for some of your initiatives. Instead of recovering, let's say you do 7% cash back on new home construction, instead of recovering that in a five-year period, it might take six or seven, because you're remitting a portion of those taxes to the special districts.
Okay.
But you do have that option, and that, that is a negotiation point, if you wanna use it, uh, to mollify some of the frustration that some people may have about losing that gain of the 3%.
I take it you don't do that in John Day?
Uh, we actually, we actually did it, we agreed, uh, to not take the U R A for the full 20-year period, and to under levy after seven years for each unit that is developed. So, units built in year one, we will no longer take any taxes from them in years eight and beyond. A unit built in year five, we would no longer take any taxes from it from year 12 and beyond. So we basically said, we'll agree to under levy after we've gotten repaid for our rebate. And it was largely for the same reasons, we knew they needed the tax dollars as well.
How, how did they respond to not getting their, their raise?
Well, I mean, very, Parks and Rec was actually fairly amenable to it, because they recognized that adding the additional housing over time was gonna be a really significant boom, uh, to their, to their overall tax base that wouldn't happen but for the U R A. Um, the, we didn't have a fire district within the U R A boundaries, so they, there was no impact on fire, uh, because our fire department was the department of the city. The cemetery districts, I mean, they kinda thread their budgets anyway, so they didn't seem overly concerned with it. Hospital needed the workforce housing, because they kept losing employees who wouldn't take jobs in the community, because they didn't have adequate housing. So they were actually amenable to it as well. So we didn't, we didn't get a lot of pushback at the time we adopted. We started to see pushback about a year or two ago, when they realized how well the U R A was performing and how much money it's generating. And now everyone's like, oh, well, we want some of that, and we're like, and you'll get it, uh, in year seven and beyond, like we agreed. Uh, but that, that was the challenge we ran into, is they started to see how many, and we had 15 homes within the first three years. That added quite a bit to the tax base.
15 homes?
15.
15.
15 homes, yeah, 15 homes. I guess, you know, my worry is like, currently the library is struggling to make ends meet. The extension office, is that gonna be, mean that they're gonna lose an employee, that's gonna take away a 4-H program? Um, and those types of things, and even the town of Lakeview will not get money into their general fund if it's done. You know, and how are we going to continue when we have a very tight budget already?
I didn't think that the library would make less money.
They will, basically what they're gonna be, is they'll be frozen. They won't ever get a ra, they won't get a raise until seven, like they did in John Day, seven years. We can change that and make it something different, but, you know, um, when they're struggling right now, how are they going to make up that extra 3%? And I don't know exactly what the 3% is, how much money. That was something I was gonna try to do some research on, and I hadn't.
Well, that, those tax impacts are in the report, if, if, they're probably buried down in a section, um, I can pull it up here in a minute, but, uh, the tax impacts on each jurisdiction are in the financials and they're in the report. Um, it, this, this is a hard ground, about urban renewal, is you have to help the other jurisdictions understand we're trying, that's exactly the issue we're trying to address. There have anemic increases in property tax receipts because you're only permitting one or two homes a year. If you can get to the point where you're doing 10 to 20 homes a year, then that's gonna make a huge difference for everybody. But somebody has to make that initial investment in the infrastructure and the land development and the developer incentives to get to that point. And most of the other jurisdictions are looking at Lakeview and going, well, you're the city, you should deal with this. And you're looking at your own budgets and going, we can't. And that's, that's the reason you have a tool like this.
And then incentive part of this can only be used in the U R A, right? Like, if I'm gonna build something, say, on Third and S or something, that's not in the purple, I wouldn't get the incentive to build there, correct?
Correct, the, that's where you can do amendments, uh, that's where we have the cherry stem.
So that's where I would be afraid of, if we put.
So you have that flexibility to have people later, but unfortunately, under the current statute.
In there, that takes away from some.
We have to define a plan area at the time we adopt.
So, um, Nick, let's go over the financial impacts to the other taxing jurisdictions.
Some page 21 of the report, of the report.
Yeah. If I share my screen, will you guys be able to see it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We share, I'm actually gonna share the financial model itself. So the tax impacts, can you see the kind of brown shaded boxes? On the screen?
Yeah.
Okay. Each tax jurisdiction within the city limits is shown in the first column. And then their millage rate.
Can you make your, make those numbers bigger, please? Thank you. That's better. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Is that insulting, Nick?
No, that's good. Thank you. Thank you so much.
So millage rate for each tax jurisdiction, the largest being the town itself. You get $6.54 per thousand. County gets $3.76 per thousand. And then across all of the districts, it adds up to $18.46. So pre-urban renewal, as of this tax year, county general fund will get 567,000. Town of Lakeview would get 987,000. Those are your tax receipts before the URA is established. That will continue to be the tax receipts for each of these jurisdictions moving forward. So health district's gonna have 36,000, cemetery district's gonna have 34,000. Unless you give them more of the, of the funding, this is what they're going to get. But they will still get the 3% for the remaining 75 to 80% of Lakeview land that is not in the URA. So these are going to go up. They just won't get the 3% for the portion of the property, that 20 to 25% of your land area that's included in the urban renewal area. So it's not to say that they're gonna be completely capped. If they're just capped for that land area, that's within the boundaries. Post-urban renewal area, based on the assumptions of the plan, that triples. County will receive 1.5 million a year. Town of Lakeview will be getting 2.7 million a year. School district is gonna get 1.9 million. And then the column H shows the amount of revenue they're deferring during the period of the urban renewal area. So it is a significant deferral, but it's recognizing that the trade-off is county would otherwise get 3% on top of 567,000 versus a 300% increase over the life of the URA.
20 years, right, is what it's based on?
Well, we, we said that the URA will exist for 20 years, but these financials are actually based on 200 new homes being built. So if you get there sooner, let's say instead of doing 10 a year, and you get to the point where you're doing 15 or 20 a year, then you're gonna see these gains sooner. You'll probably see them in year 15, you may even see them in year 12. And you always have the option to retire the URA early rather than letting it run. But what other jurisdictions have done is they said, okay, we, we reached our targets before we expected to because of the program work and what we wanted it to do. Therefore, we're gonna continue to collect for another five years or so and we're gonna use that money to build a new pool or a new fire station or a new library. And you amend the plan and you say, okay, for four, five years, we're gonna capture these cash flows from the URA and then we're gonna invest it in one community development project that benefits everybody.
So you're like.
So part of what I wanted to cover with you, and I guess before I get into the other assumptions of the plan, I just want to pause there. Does the principle of the area behind urban renewal make sense to the council? And do you feel like at this stage, you can, is defensible enough that you're not electing to have a recall? Or what if you're deciding the community, strike up, taken back behind the woodshed? Are you comfortable with the principle and the economics at this stage and how it would work and why, why the town is considering?
So the library wouldn't get 3%, they would get 25%, less than 3%. Because that's what we had incorporated was 25%, right? So they would get 2% or something.
Well, it's still 3%, but it's instead of 2% of one, the 100% of the jurisdiction, they're giving 75%.
75%, yeah?
Right, so 3% of the 75%.
3% of the 75%. That's what I was saying.
But we also lose that 3% going into their plan.
Exactly.
It was the 3% of the 20% or 25% of land area, yeah?
Correct.
And you're basing it off of what, 2.78 million as the value in the, in the graph that you showed us?
Um, 2.78 million is your current total tax receipts within the town that go to these jurisdictions.
So what's the value of the URA that we, that you have in the red?
The total tax value, assessed value? Is 34 million. So your current assessed value is 150 million for the entire town. That's, that's all properties within the city limits. And when we carve out what's right now, just under 23% of your assessed value, we're at 34 million. If we add those other properties, it's probably a growth of 35 and a half, 36 million. We could go as high as 37 million. That, that's where we trigger your 25% limit.
I guess, I'm just trying to figure out the math and what, how much it affects those entities the first year. Is all I'm trying to figure out in my head.
Well, so.
The 34 million.
What I can show you, what basically what you do is you take the millage rate. So is there one in particular you wanna see?
Well, let's go with, let's go with the town of Lakeview. How much will we lose out of our general fund?
Okay, so you would normally get $6.50 of this amount of money, but it's gonna be that amount. Normally what you would be getting is two, oops, I didn't do that right. So it's that amount. A couple thousand, that's your millage rate. 34 million. 22,928 is what you're gonna continue to get because that's frozen. But that would normally be growing by 3%. So what you'd be losing out on in year one is $6,700.
But, okay.
That's what, that's the 3% of that 34 million that you would otherwise be getting. You're gonna get $6,700 less than you would get in the URA. And I can, if you want, I can add a table that will show that based on our assumptions for, for each year.
That, that would be great. Because I'll, I'll then set, and then just save it and I'll send that table out to everybody tomorrow. Yeah, and, and I, I just think we need to have a conversation with all of these special districts. Well, we will, we will. It's part, it's part of the 45 days we, we need to go and talk to them, each of them.
Okay.
But first you have to know how to say the words.
I know, I know. That's why I'm trying to figure out. Make sure so I can make a decision to be informed.
Right, which is why we're having this so that we can go and speak to each of the districts.
Wouldn't they say 3% of 2 million is more than 60, 500?
I came up with 22,000. I came up with 22,000, so that's why I'm kind of wondering, you know. But you know, 5,000 to the library is a lot of money. 5,000 to the extension office is a lot of money. That could be, you know, very detrimental to the programs. And I worry about that because right now they're struggling and how can we make that up to them? You know, if we, if we're allowed to give them back their little 3% and just the town and the county take the hit, well, then maybe that'll be it.
Well, I, I see your point.
Yeah.
And also I think we need to worry about, we need streets, we need all the other stuff.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
I mean, it's kind of a catch 22. I mean.
But those, those districts were voted in by the people. And I can remember when the 911 district was voted in back in the 90s. And the county ended up taking the money after measure 51 or something, I think it was. When it basically did away with the 911, the special district, and the county never gave the money to the town to help them with 911. So, yeah. And so, and I don't want to be the person who's took the money away from the special districts.
Not, there will. There, there will be people that see it that way. What you have to ignore in order to see it that way is column G, which is where you triple the amount of money that each of those jurisdictions get. They will never, I mean, the library will never increase its tax value by a single dollar. Because they have no ability to do that. They can't raise their millage rate and they don't build houses or commercial property. So the library's ability to increase its tax base is exactly nothing. They're wholly dependent on EU and on private sector investment to increase the amount of revenue they receive. So that's where the word that comes to my mind is biopic. If you're looking at, oh, I can't give up that 3% increase on top of my $68,000. And you say, well, what if I take your $68,000 and I triple it over the next 15 years? Are you worried about the 3% then? Or would you like the 300% but I'm gonna make you wait for it?
But I think that the 3%, they have also overhead that is going to be affected by inflation. They have wages that are gonna go up. You know, there's just a lot of factors in there that I think we've gotta consider as part of all of this, you know. I think the idea behind the URA is a great idea. But I, I just have, I struggle with the special districts.
A lot of the libraries volunteer.
Yeah, yeah. But the extension offices isn't, no. And the programs that they've been able to add. You know, the, the hospital, you know, is one that is struggling with the Medicare, you know, because we're, they're mainly Medicare payments.
I'd like to run the hospital.
Do a great job there.
I could cut some out of that.
You know, the school district, you know, all of those, you know. I went, I went to a track meet yesterday, you know, and the, the school district needs money too. You know, there was a kid running and doing a triple jump and part of the asphalt came up and went with him. So you know, there's a whole, a lot of people need money.
Can I, can I interrupt? The school district is not affected by your urban renewal agency at all.
So why are they in the list?
They have to be in the list. We have to show it as an impacted tax jurisdiction by law. But the school district does not receive this funding the way other districts do. They get their funding from a state formula. And that state formula is done before URA is considered. So whether you establish an urban renewal area or don't will not affect the school district's revenue by the, by a dollar.
Okay. Anyone else?
I guess we need that little asterisk is by the ones that it's not gonna. So we know which ones it is not gonna.
Is that both, both school districts?
Have to show the school district.
We only have one school district.
Is that the ESD also?
You're right, I forgot about that.
No, ESD will be affected because they rely on property taxes, but the school district's seven. Their, their funding will continue to come in based on student enrollment.
Okay.
Which for schools is actually a positive thing. Because if you're building 10 to 15 homes a year and those homes are being filled with young working families, then the school district revenue actually increases. They don't have to wait.
It's gonna go up.
They're gonna immediately benefit from having homes for teachers and more students enrolling.
Because of student enrollment, it's gonna go up.
Right.
It'll be 8,000, 8,000 a kid.
Right. The, and, yeah, they're, yeah, they're based off the state, on that part there.
And there, there are another example of a group that is relying on EU or on private sector investment, but mainly on your ability to stimulate housing production by extending infrastructure and motivating developers because the school district doesn't have any control over student enrollment. If, if people, you know, if our population is aging and we're not building workforce housing, then they're gonna continue to see enrollment declines.
So they're the only one in the list though that it won't change, right?
Correct.
So, I have a question. What happens if you put the, if you put the program in place and the developers don't come? That there is no, that there is no housing growth? The whole, the whole plan relies on the increase in the, in the overall size of the tax base because of growth in development. But if the developers don't come, then what happens to the scheme?
So the part that we haven't explained to you yet is the incentives that we've put together to get the developers to come.
But even so, yeah, and it's in the plan, right? It's, it, that's, but what if they don't come?
Yes. So the answer is there's no new tax increment created. And all, all your urban renewal area will receive is the 3% of the 20% of land in the boundaries. You won't really get any money and you won't incur any costs because there's nothing to incentivize.
But each of the special districts will not, if the developers don't come, if the incentive schemes that Michelle's mentioning, you know, aren't attractive enough given our distance and the environment here, then, then, you know, the promise that we're making to the special districts, which is wait because the, the size of the overall pie is gonna be bigger, that, that, that promise will be hollow, right? They won't get more money and they also won't see the annual growth because they will have given it up.
Right, so you also will not have spent the money because there wouldn't be anything to spend it on. So just give it back to them.
Give it back. Who's gonna give the money back? What, who makes that decision?
You, you as the board of the urban renewal agency. I mean, in your scenario, there's no development, so you haven't paid out any incentives. So all of that money you've collected is sitting in your bank account. If three years goes by, the program's not working, no new houses have been built, just give them the money back and close the URA.
And that's because the URA has its own bank account, is that correct?
Well, you can, you can create your own bank account if you want to or you can co-mingle it with the town's money. But the point is you're, you're collecting that 3% in order to pay it as incentives to developers. If no developers come, you've paid out no incentives. So it's no different than the county assessor collecting that money and remitting it to the districts. You would just remit it to the districts and say, well, that didn't work. You're out the little bit of money you paid me to help create it.
It's like Whole Foods, like Whole Foods, is that a developer? Is that what we're talking about if they came here?
Could be.
If you have land for a Whole Foods building in your plan area, then the answer would be yes. If you don't have any commercial property or that type of land in the plan, then it wouldn't impact the URA.
And remind me again, who's, who's decision, I mean, who's running the URA? What, what is the group of people? Is it the town council?
Correct.
Yes.
And right, the way we have it set up, the town council is the board of directors of the. And right, the, the way we have it set up, the town council is the board of directors of the URA. And Michelle or your, your town manager would be your managing director.
So votes are, are the four council members, the mayor, and the town manager, six, or?
I don't get, I don't get a vote.
Oh, you don't have a vote, you're just a, you're just a, you're working.
I'm just the admin person.
And actually, Ray doesn't get the vote.
Well, I'm guessing it would because it wouldn't be council, it would be board of directors for the URA.
Ray gets a vote. Ray votes.
Yes, it's fine, Ray gets, yeah, in that.
Well, sometimes he doesn't get the vote.
Right.
So Nick, I have a question. When this, say, the first year of incentives, say they're doing eighty-five hundred dollar incentive per house. And we have ten house starts, how do you finance that eighty-five hundred dollars per house that first year? That's eighty-five thousand dollars that the town has to cover before it's senior revenue from the URA.
That's right.
When, when we did this in John Day, we did a line of credit with the bank. And we used the line of credit to fund the incentives. And then we paid that off in future tax years with the new tax receipts.
Okay.
You also have the option to do an air fund loan between funds if you have a fund that has reserves. But in this case, you've got something we didn't have, which is R3. So if House Bill thirty-one thirty-eight passes and we get the funding for R3, R3 can become your bank and can cash flow the urban renewal area investments. And then it doesn't hitch your budget at all.
Okay, we can tap some of that. And we can say, we're gonna give you a break on water hookups and, not liquid, but water sewer, water sewer hookups, SDCs.
Right.
So they were getting, if you, they could get a break on that.
We, we went really aggressive. We created ten different programs that would allow you to give up to forty-five thousand dollars in incentives per month. And it's the most aggressive housing incentive program in the country.
Shall we show them?
Well, yeah, let me, let me just open up my financial model here. Um, what, I'll walk you through the scenario here in a second, but the, the programs that are defined, assistance with planning. Assistance with land acquisition and due diligence on the land development. We've got some pre-development incentives to offset costs like architecture and design. We've got infrastructure investment incentives to take care of some of the water sewer broadband power. Land development incentives that can be triggered for grading and clearing. Credits for system development charges, as well as rebates on new construction or renovations. And then we even include some manufactured home preservation. But the way this is set up, we can credit up to seventy-five hundred dollars for system development charges. Reimburse land acquisition, planning, due diligence, and any combination that you need to tailor for a particular house or subdivision. And then rebates of seven percent once the home is constructed. As well as some administrative cost recovery for the URA, which you can then, if you don't need it, reinvest either in other incentives or in research and development on innovative building approaches. So in, in the examples shown below, someone comes in with a new home. You could give them five hundred dollars for planning and code assistance. A thousand dollars on land acquisition. A thousand dollars for pre-development incentives. Five thousand for infrastructure, five thousand for land development. Seventy-five hundred for system development charge. And then if the home exits, I think we base this at the average assessed value, which we assume is gonna be a hundred and seventy-eight thousand for the home. Um, then they would also get a check at the end of the project, once it's realized on the tax rolls for twelve thousand four eighty-nine. So in that scenario, you would be offered thirty-two thousand dollars in development incentives for one house. Uh, which, you know, let's say your house is the three hundred thousand dollar build. Uh, you, you just save that more than ten percent on the cost of that. If that doesn't draw in developers, I don't know what to tell you. There, there are darker forces at work. Ten percent cash back on your development isn't gonna get you there.
But the houses have to sell, right? And the houses have to sell for a price that gives the developer a return commensurate with their risk. And if there isn't a mark, if it turns out that there isn't a market for houses at that price. Then, you know, then the project won't be as successful as, as we would hope.
We're, we're looking at some houses for a hundred and forty thousand that are pretty nice setups. That would be not low income, but.
Affordable.
Affordable, like three bedroom, two bath.
For a hundred and forty thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
Right, that's kind of what, what I envision for all this. And not, because you put a house out there for three hundred grand, there's like, I mean, I, I wouldn't buy it.
Three hundred grand, you go, go out here and get six acres of.
Well, yeah, but, right.
Here in town, I would need to be reasonable about it.
Yeah.
There aren't ten hundred and forty thousand dollar houses available, especially brand-new houses.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
You know, I'll, I'll point out for the board, the way we design this, you're not telling the market what to build. You're responding to the market. So if a developer comes in and says, I'm gonna do missing middle housing, and I'm gonna try to exit at a hundred and fifty thousand to get it. Great, then you tell them this is what we can offer you based on that proposal. If a developer comes in and says, I think there's a market for five cent, many custom homes that are gonna clear it through fifty apiece. Then you say, great, here's what we can offer you. It's up to the developers to figure out what the product market fit looks like. They're taking the risk by investing their capital to build the product. You're offering to syndicate that risk by providing some cash back once it's on the tax rolls. So it's a shared investment approach, but at this point, we're not putting you in the position of having to tell the developer what to build. You're just responding as the developers come to you and say, okay, this is what I think I can sell.
And the developers should be doing market research for it.
If it's, you know, four hundredish clusters on one lot, and that's what people want.
Good things.
Great.
Market research is different than being able to know how much you have to pay to get labor out here to actually build the house. Right, we don't have a labor pool that can do that.
They should know that, I mean, and I think we would try to educate them when the market to them to come here.
Well, just like, right now, there's a lot down at the end of Center Street. It's forty-nine-nine, I think you'd maybe get it for forty-five or forty. I think you could put two units on that. So that's kind of what I'm looking at, just for fun. To see if that would be profitable.
Right.
I mean, you know, if I could make twenty grand or whatever, you know, or something, I don't know.
Right.
But you have a nice livable space for people.
So one of the things that, that I've had in mind with this URA is we've got Next Renewables coming into town.
Right.
And they're going to need forty people to, to work. So how, how do we support that? We, we know, we don't have it. We, we don't. And how do we support them and put in that workforce housing affordable between one fifty and one seventy so that they will come? And how do we, in addition to that, how do we help support getting the education certifications that Next Renewables is gonna need for their workforce? Sort of this like kind of trifecta of, how do we help? Well, we have the ability to partner with KCC and let them know it's coming. And then we plug everybody in and we develop a certification or whatever it is. And then we know that their average wage is gonna be between fifty and fifty-five thousand. So we, we partner with whoever we can find and then try to let Next know, we've got a developer coming. Would anybody, you know, be interested in moving to Lakeview into a new home? And I, I don't know, there's just a million ways we could probably help support that. And we know that Next has got an immediate need for that. I mean, they wanna be up and running soon.
Well, they said there was gonna be close to a hundred right away. He told me a hundred right away.
That's construction workers.
Yeah.
It's, it's a tinner, though, yeah.
And then we've got the cement place that's gonna do thirty.
Right.
At fifty or fifty-eight thousand.
Right, so we, what, we don't, what I'm trying to create is, we don't wanna have these companies come and then go.
Yeah, got nothing.
Right.
Sorry. We neither have the ability to house you, and we don't have an education partner. So that's all that I'm trying to, is to solve the immediate problem. So if we look at actual numbers, within the next two years, we're gonna need thirty new houses. At a minimum, right? So if, if we put in URA and we, Sheila and I are doing our job right. And we incentivize it and we recruit a builder that keeps it in that price frame. Then I think we've got a really good program to put them into. But if we, if Sheila and I go out right now and say, hey, you wanna come to Lakeview and build a house? Um, we're not gonna get anybody to, to come. Based on the results that we've generated to date, we don't have a lot of developers coming to do ten, fifteen, twenty houses. We have one or two houses, and some of them are just self, like, I wanna move up or, or whatever. But we, we have something that we need to figure out how to solve, like, come up with a combination. And even if we could recruit a company to come in and do twenty houses, we're still gonna be short. So I, I don't know how else to get people out, out here to develop that. And, and maybe this isn't the answer, or maybe it's a combination of answers. But I don't, I don't know who else is gonna solve the problem. And maybe we just rely on somebody else to do it, I don't know.
It's not ever gonna get done that way.
I mean, I don't wanna be facetious and thinking, oh, the town can do it, but.
I, I think part, part of the talking points for your other districts also is that we're gonna see job creation from the builders building the houses. From the people doing the land development. You may end up with modular home builders or some of these, you know, three D printing companies actually creating offices and manufacturing facilities in your town. So that the sources of input for their construction projects are closer to where they're doing the homes. But what we're assuming is that through a combination of these incentives, we can average ten new, ten new units a year over a twenty-year period. That's your two hundred. If you get there in seven or eight years, then you nailed it. If it takes the full twenty, ten homes a year is eight times what you're currently doing. I mean, what do you, what do you get sent right now, maybe two?
One.
Or two a year?
One per year.
Uh, and, and maybe every three or four years, another one gets deleted because of demolition or some other, you know, cause. So, I mean, you're, at this point, everybody is stuck in quicksand. And somebody's gotta come along and drag you out of it. And, and this, what we're offering here is a tool that you can drag yourselves out with. But it will, it will take a little bit of salesmanship and a little bit of patience on the part of the community. They're gonna have to trust that you guys are making smart investments. And then you're creating the value that the program is intended to create.
Charlie.
Well, if Next Renewable goes, if Next Renewable goes sideways, then we forget this, right?
We back it up and set it to work.
Back it up, throw it away, right?
Well, so I, I would tell you on that, because I've been to your community a couple of times now. And it's a great base camp for exploring the, the desert around you. I think you've got opportunities for Airbnbs, for recreation economy, for active retirees who would move there that have disposable income and don't need a job. So don't sell yourself short and think that you have to be wholly dependent on one big employer. We're trying to break that, the wind bus cycle that's plagued our rural towns, by creating opportunities for people who live there who are digital commuters. Uh, and I worked from home, I could live in Lakeview, you know. We're, we're trying to attract people that can work from anywhere, who would choose to work and live in your community. If you get big employers who create a lot of housing for workers, that's fantastic. But you also run the risk, like what you saw with Red Rock, which is they, they closed in the mills, they, they closed. So we're trying to create some mechanized diversification through these housing initiatives. It's not gonna be dependent just on natural resource employers.
So when I look at the URA that's out, listed out here, okay? And we're saying that the goal is two hundred houses in the next twenty years. Where are they gonna build them? And the red URA?
Suriname is part.
You know, I, I just.
Sandy's out here.
In the map, you know, the only place I see is like the old Lakeview lumber site, you know.
So there's the old Lakeview lumber, there, here at Creekside, there's seventeen empty lots here.
At Creekside.
At Cree, at Creekside. If you go above the Lake County Fairgrounds, there's twenty lots right there.
On River Road.
On River Road, correct, okay. And.
An extra cement plot though.
Right. Um, and then for the Lakeview lumber site, there's, you know, we could, if you wanna do a mixed use. You could put twenty-five townhomes in there and probably ten single-family. Like, you know, twelve hundred square feet, that'd be fantastic, but, so two.
Little strip mall, you could do all kinds of stuff here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and then, you know.
Off of that East Street too, that you were talking about, Charlie.
There's a few lots that are gonna add part of that in.
Yeah.
I think we could find lots, I, I'm not thinking two hundred, I'm thinking like, to get started with ten.
Oh, yeah, no, I think it would be ten, yeah.
And our, part of what Michelle and I had talked about, I don't know if we, you know, she's discussed this with you, but if R3's funding comes together. That agency can help assist with some of the blight. So if we see blighted properties that come on the market that are listing at the, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollar range. And nobody really wants them. You know, maybe they're run down or beat up. We could take some of those off, out of circulation by buying them through R3. Demoting and redeveloping the land, and then getting it set up for new construction. And what that would look like, it, it sounds kinda awkward, but it actually works. We, we spent eighty thousand dollars out of R3's budget to do the purchase. Your fire department comes in and does a burn to learn and clears the, clears the land. R3 recreates it, puts it on the market, we sell the lot for thirty thousand. And we just took a fifty thousand dollar hit out of R3's budget in the form of a grant. But that thirty thousand dollar lot is now prepped for a new home that could come in that might assess two hundred thousand. And would last for the next fifty years.
And it makes like a good amount.
So we're not saying we're gonna do that a lot, but onesies, twosies here and there as they come on the market. And we see an opportunity to do it, I wouldn't rule it out.
Right, so there's a, a house that comes to mind right now in the north end. It, it was a former drug house. I guess they put new windows in it, and it's on the market now for eighty-nine thousand, and it's been on the market. Yeah, it's been on the market for a long, long time, nobody's gonna buy that.
You'd probably get that for fifty.
But the point is, is that we can help get that, clear that off. That, that's the whole problem, is that the house is trash. And it doesn't matter what you do, it just needs to start over.
So not as the town, but as the board of the URA?
The board of the URA could do it, yeah, yeah.
And, and I would say shift that risk to R3. Let R3 be your partner, let them do the acquisition and get the land prepped. And then you guys can come in and offer incentives on the new construction, but that way you're not in a position. But that way, you're not in a position of having to purchase property, uh, within your own community directly. Uh, it gives you at least one degree of separation. Even though you're in support of it, um, you're not you're not using local tax dollars to remove homes from the tax rules, which someone will spin.
How far do I want to figure out?
So, uh, what's the update on thirty-one thirty-eight for R three?
Uh, we currently have seven or eight bipartisan legislators backing the bill. It's recommended for passage. It's sitting with joint ways and means. And it's going to sit there for the next fifty days and then it'll be voted on. So we're we're at the finish line and hoping we get nudged over it and into the winner's circle. But at this point, other than some internal politicking with a few key legislators, there's really not much more work for us to do.
They're just saying wait. That's the fun part.
Wait, wait and pray. But I do think we'll be able to make some significant strides. Another example of how R three might work effectively with your U R A board, um, just to kickstart the market. If you have developers willing to do three or four homes, but it's uncertain about how long they'll be on the market before they sell, we can guarantee purchase at the appraised value if they haven't sold within ninety days. And then R three can be the patient capital that waits for those to be leased or sold.
See you later.
That way the builder knows they have an exit strategy in the event that they can't have a transactable property within the first three months. And I apologize because I can't see anybody except myself.
Sorry, it was my eyebrows.
Yeah, I just went, wow, like a cartoon character.
Uh, we we can get as creative as you need to to stimulate your market until it's in a healthy place where it's operating more efficiently. Uh, right now, it's not. It's it's on life support and we need we need to correct that because you have a great community to live in. People aren't aren't avoiding moving to your market because they don't like Lakeview. They're they're avoiding it because they don't like the risk of frontier markets generally. And so we we need to show them that we're willing to absorb some of that risk.
It'd be like taking out Dawn's Market.
Oh, my gosh, that's such a.
I mean, I mean, there's there's some possibilities, right?
There are.
With this.
Yeah, yes, it. What I like to view it as is that.
Big light basement.
Yeah, we get, we're putting more tools in our toolbox. That's all. And and if we if it is a utilized tool that we're that we're using a lot and it's producing good results, then I like it. Um, and if R three is is a partner that we can use as an additional tool and it works, then I like it. Um, but it it just gives us more tools and more options to to choose from whether we want to or not. And and better to have them to choose from than to to keep going like we are in in some fashion.
So new map and think about this for a little bit.
Okay, well, it is, it's a, it is a lot to absorb. It's it's it's.
Well, at least now when I read through this, I'll know a little bit what I'm reading about.
Understand. Yeah, so we'll we'll work on redoing the map and, um, putting the properties and looking at it and then adding more columns to the, um, financial model so that you guys can, it it's all, it's interactive. So if you change one thing, it changes everywhere. So you can go and see what those effective changes might do, either up or down. Um, but it 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 does take a while for it to, I mean, I've been working on this with Nick for a year and a half and I I still have questions and, um, there's still some little points that I'm not able to communicate as effectively as Nick, um, but I'm getting there. So it's going to take you some time.
Okay, now if you would like to do a more focused presentation of some of the special districts uh, before this goes out for general circulation, I'd be happy to come down and bring some pictures of the homes that were built in John Day. Uh, we can show those fifteen new homes, uh, all shapes and sizes, duplexes, single-family, custom. I think the the highest assessed value was probably four hundred thousand. Um, but we have as little as a hundred and twenty. And we also have, as we speak, new home lots in construction for a hundred new homes in three subdivisions. Uh, that's put tons of people to work. It's a wonderful thing. Every every street you drive down, there's a big yellow truck doing some kind of construction. It is awesome. The restaurants love it. I mean, it's created life in a sleepy little town where nothing was happening.
Well, if we have a if we have a presentation like at the Alps Club to to go over all this and show the public, we need to have it down.
I think that would be great. So Nick, you're coming to Lakeview.
Well, sometime, but when we get it organized.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I will just, the the truth in lending clause renewal is some people just aren't going to get it. I mean, it's it's a complex financial model. It's a complex approach. You need to understand it and you need to be able to reassure your constituents
That's what I mean.
that you're you're doing something that's smart and good in the community. Uh, some people will only ever see that it's taking that three percent away. They're not going to see the three X increase in taxes that this could achieve.
Now, we have Nick on the schedule for the main ninth at the Fairgrounds. Do we need to change that then? Give him more time or?
We won't be ready for this from in May ninth.
Okay. Or do you want to meet that day with him, too, and like previously and have him come and share this with the public, the idea?
Well, I think the idea idea needs to get out there to the public and that we know that people are going to show up for that meeting. So it'd be a good way to get it to the public.
Go big.
Why not?
Go big or go home, you guys.
Well, it seems like this is pretty quick, I mean, to me, but.
Well, and that's not telling that it's approved.
No, I know, but they're going to thank you.
Introduction of what it is.
Everybody's going to thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I think it'd be a matter of saying, this is something that the council is looking at, but we want you to be aware of it and we want your feedback, you know, from. If they have questions, you know, I think. I'm sure I'll think of other questions.
I know.
You know. Well, why don't we have you come down on the ninth? Can you, is that, would that work for your schedule, May ninth?
Let me just check.
You did say that you were holding that date, Nick.
Oh, yes, we we have, uh, I'm already moving trip.
Okay, okay.
The eighth is the.
Um, I'm I'm going to be in Lakeview from noon until midnight or whenever you drum out.
Okay, okay. So why don't we have a a hit, an introduction or a conversation at the ninth meeting? I'm sure we'll need to hold some more.
And Nick said he'll be here at noon, so.
Well, that's my concern is so so everybody knows what he's going to talk about out there.
Okay.
I mean, don't you think?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
If he's at noon, maybe you can all convene with him that day before.
Oh, no.
You're not setting.
We could, uh, we could put some products, some cadence products together. Maybe one is a step-by-step, like, how does urban renewal work in practice? From an applicant applying until a new home is built. You know, maybe that's a poster. And maybe we show another poster of, you know, potential tax impacts on jurisdictions, but also the benefits and just have a, you know, plus and minus column. I mean, we could probably do something like that to try and simplify some of the concepts. And then I'll have your own video of our subdivisions. Uh, we've got pictures of the homes that were built, some testimonials from developers. The exciting thing for me is that at least for the first five years, every new home built on our program was built by a county resident. Not one person came from outside the county. It was all people here. And some were building for aging parents, some were building to upgrade themselves. Um, some were renters that wanted to move in and own a house. But a hundred percent of our participants so far have all been grand county residents.
Then we can have some information on next renewables and the other one. And have that stuff available because people are going to ask about that and that'll give us a little more support.
And next wants to come and present later in May to their own community event as well.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay. How long is that?
On Tuesday, so we can have the surrogates. On Tuesday, so we can have the surrogates. I'm not in charge of their step, but. Try to push it, please. Anything else you guys? All right, well, more work.
Uh, do we need to back anymore?
I think that's all, Nick. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Sorry, sir.
Thanks, guys. See ya.
Bye-bye.
Okay, let's move on down.
Should we set a work session date now, ahead of time, so that we can put it on our calendars? We can do that, absolutely. And I'd like to set it also to include, um, the skate park. We're at that.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
Okay.
Looks like we have a work session already scheduled on the second.
Yeah.
That's for what? Uh, of May? Uh-huh.
Yeah, we've got one scheduled.
Um, it looks like the first town council work session for housing, reading home assistant programs.
Well, we have a beginning Tuesday, a work session Tuesday at four o'clock.
Yeah.
So let's second, let's fill it with the skate park so we can add the, okay, May second?
Yeah, it should be very quick.
Okay, perfect. So we'll fill May second with the skate park, the U R A. Um, and.
Whatever else you want to throw in.
And, et cetera.
Et cetera. And then we'll get another date on Tuesday. Well, we've got the eighth and the ninth, right?
And then the eighth and the ninth.
Except.
Five o'clock on Monday, the eighth.
Don't come at the eighth unless you're the the Azon for the planning commission.
Who's Charlie Pike.
Which is Charlie Pike. You're the Azon or is it Char?
Charlie wants to do that, that's for.
Okay, so no eighth.
For the planning.
Don't come to the eighth.
Where is?
I don't know.
You can't have more than three at home.
Yeah, well, but if they decide to appeal something, they have to come to the council and we can't be. It would be easier for you to stay away.
Yeah.
I'm going to stay. Well, I'm going to stay at Scott's.
That's right. You go over to Scott's.
My house, why they're over here.
So and then May ninth is at the Fairgrounds. And it's the big one, so we're going to.
Right.
Um, have lots of wonderful things to, really, I just wanted it to be a state of where the town is right now, everything that, because there's a lot going on. Um, and I wanted to put up timelines and what to expect and where we're at and what we've done and where we're going and all that stuff.
Clear up questions.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to be talking like an animal.
Yes, you will, yeah.
Stop the lot of talking, Mike, but.
Yeah, because we we do have some wonderful programs, you know, the D L C D is is going, which is wonderful. Um, and it's a part, first part for a second part. The U R A is a wonderful program.
Pilot program will be heading up soon for the water treatment.
Yep, the pilot program will be there. Um, McDonald Park, hopefully we get to bring the turtle, the turtle. The turtle is another turtle.
That would be nice, too.
I love turtle. Where is the turtle?
It disappeared.
No! The turtle's my favorite.
They did.
And then, um, so we can have the the, um, North project and the extension there.
Smart meters.
And smart meters and.
Well, maybe on the second, we can come up with some ideas to do on the ninth.
Yes, and then, um.
Want to add to that?
Roberta Road.
So we, no, we're meeting on the ninth, yeah. That's fine.
So there's lots of wonderful programs and things happening, so, and it's a lot. It's it's the most I've seen being done since I I've been here. And so I I'm sure everybody's feeling the same way of like, that's a lot of stuff going on. It is.
Are we on six?
We're on six, okay. So I'm not going to talk about the transfer right now because we're, um, I've got to update and do, um, the labor stuff. But the M O U is in process. I'll have it for the ninth for the council to approve um, so that we can at least get some leadership over to nine-one-one. It's a pretty simple contract. It says the sheriff's department will run nine-one-one.
Right.
Um, so the sheriff's contract. This is, um, something that I wanted to talk to all about, um, because it is needing to be renewed. So do you guys have the sheriff's contract?
It's not about you or the contract.
I probably won't.
My mind.
Bye-bye. All right, I would still.
See ya.
I still want to the bathroom today.
Bye.
That's something.
If you want to leave, you can. So I've gone over the draft. The only, um, comments that I had on it was in, um, one point one.
Deputies?
Yes. Um, and I wanted to have it say, instead of providing five, uh, Department of Public Safety, uh, fully commissioned sheriff's people, that I wanted it to say for four of these commissioned people and one S R O.
So it's still five.
Told, but it's just that four.
Yeah.
Four are specifically, yeah, four deputies and one is specifically to be a school resource officer. Because I think, um, since the town has, um, paid for a school resource officer and created that, it has been a wonderful addition to the the community.
Yes, R O. Well, we just had a kid bring a knife. Last week, or, uh, Monday, Tuesday.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, good.
But I mean, there's all kinds of stuff all the time.
No, there needs to be an S R O.
So you want this to say something like, the sheriff, sheriff will provide five Oregon Department of Public Safety standards and training, certified, fully commissioned sheriff deputies, comma, four to perform all services described, one to perform school resource officer duties.
Correct. Yeah, I just think it's better to have it spelled out because I want this contract to last for five years.
Right.
Because I don't want to talk about it anymore.
So a point I would like to add is, um, the dog issue, since we're renegotiating this contract, um, we, I believe we need to put something in here that the sheriff's office is going to provide a deputy whose sole responsibility is performing.
At the nine-one-one discussion, though, today, it's, um, a lot of the issue is not the sheriff's office responding. It's the lack of the DA prosecuting and the lack of the court following her.
And that's what we're having with code enforcement, too.
Yeah.
When you write a ticket and the court doesn't pay five dollars a month and don't force them to clean up their property, it's a waste of time to go out there and keep writing tickets.
So the sheriff's office is seizing those?
They're they're not seizing. Well, they are to a point, but you've got to also remember, they have no place to house them and the expense to feed them, because it's like ten or fifteen dollars a day for them to sit at the shelter or at the animal hospital. Well, they are to a point, but you gotta also remember, they have no place to house them and the expense to feed them, because it's like ten or fifteen dollars a day for them to sit at the shelter or at the animal hospital. And the animal hospital's a non-kill shelter, so if they sit there for six months, we're paying for that for six months.
No, the sheriff's office only paying three days. Mike was pretty adamant about that.
Yeah, they'll only pay three days, but if they have to stay longer there, because they're, they're a non-kill shelter.
Right.
So who pays for that?
I don't know who pays for that.
Does the vet's office just let them out?
I don't know what the vet's office does. Do they keep, you know, do they get money from someplace else? I don't know.
Yeah, I have no idea, but I know they're a non-kill shelter, they will knock their animal down.
Right. But the sheriff's office was pretty adamant, you know, they, they will only pay for three days.
And then?
And then it's up to the animal hospital what they do.
To release, um.
Well, they get them to a home or they get them someplace.
Dangerous dogs?
Dangerous dogs, they do.
They have to be.
They have to do the.
So are they not considering dogs that are biting people dangerous dogs?
I think it depends on the circumstances.
Yeah, I, I mean, if they're not, I don't think the sheriff's office is seizing dogs that are not considered to be dangerous dogs.
So, so the sheriff's office is only seizing dogs considered to be dangerous?
Yes.
So then, it wouldn't make sense that the veterinarian is releasing these dogs. And they're only putting down dangerous dogs.
When we say releasing, I don't believe they're just saying, here you go, go out to the community. I, they find a home for them or they send them some, you know, to another place. But it's not that they're, you know, releasing them out to the community.
And on top of that, if you have five officers, you're taking one and dedicating it as a school resource officer, you dedicate one to being a dog catcher, basically. You have three officers to cover your community. So that creates a whole new issue.
So, nobody other than me at this table thinks we should get an animal control officer?
I think we don't have to add one.
Right.
If we can afford it, yeah, but I, I don't think.
I'm, I'm not so sure it should be part of the sheriff's. Was, who is, who is the guy, who is the guy that?
Mike McGowan.
No, no, no. A dog catcher. A dog catcher.
Oh.
More time.
Fratato.
Fratato.
That's what I said, Fratato.
Okay, I didn't hear you. He wasn't, he wasn't part of the sheriff's office, was he?
Yes.
He's, uh, one of the reserves for sheriff and for the town. So I have the O R S right here and I'll read it to you. It's six oh nine point zero three zero, the governing body of any county may declare the county a dog control district, which the county did. This is there, right here. Animal control authority, the animal control authority is that person jointly appointed by the town of Lakeview Council and the Lake County Board of Commissioners. The animal control officer is an officer of Lake County. And so, if we're going to have an animal control officer here in the town, they, per this, must be a deputy of the sheriff's office.
Does it say Heather Page?
And per the state of Oregon, yeah, they, the county is the one that must support that. So the county is going to have to furnish an animal control officer. It can't just be a.
They have the farm insurance for the county, but they don't have the farm insurance for the town, because you're, you're talking about two different entities.
Correct, but we get a say in the appointment of that.
You can appoint an officer because you're gonna pay for it.
That's what this is for, that's what this right here is for.
What they're gonna say, though, is that they are doing the dog ordinance because they are following up on dog calls. You know, and, but it's not a full-time that where they sit around and wait for a dog call, they're also doing other duties. So they're gonna say that they've already got it, that they're following that ordinance.
And if you appoint that in that contract, they're gonna pull one of our officers and dedicate him one hundred percent to chasing dogs. So that puts three officers in our community to take care of problems in our community. And you're not gonna have. That'll be about a hundred grand by the time you pay insurance and furs and all, that's about a hundred and thirty.
Okay, then.
A hundred and thirty-five for a dog catcher.
And then on top of that, you've gotta feed those dogs three times a day, you've gotta provide medical care. Three times a day? Yep, and then you gotta clean them and take care of them.
And you have to have the proper vehicle for a dog catcher.
And then you gotta have the vehicle, then you've gotta have a place to house them.
Right. And see, we did it out at the airport last night.
Right, Charlie Pike was gonna look into that. I haven't talked to Charlie about that yet. He's had other things going.
I think it would.
Well, there was a. There was a dog, there was a dog at a union school Monday that bit three kids. And a cowboy roped him. Roped him up, took care of him.
Vigilating justice.
Yeah, so anyway, that's the way they handled it. Yeah, it, it's, it's a lot more just than just appointing an officer to deal with the dogs.
Yeah.
Because we, we've talked about it pretty extensively, even before Michelle was here, when I was on council, we talked about it. And the expense comes to about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year by the time you maintain a kennel. People there to, uh, be at that kennel, to clean the cages, to feed the dogs, the new vehicle you have to have as a dog catcher vehicle, it's about three hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Well, provide medical.
It's, it's pretty expensive.
Yeah, provide medical for.
The dogs.
The dogs, well, that's what the vet would be for.
But it still has to be paid for.
Sure, I understand.
You know, it, it still has to be paid for, you still have to have two people there.
Sure.
Because you can't leave one person with animals like that because you don't know how aggressive they are.
Sure.
So you have two people at the dog pound, I guess you'd call it, and the vehicle to do it, the man hours, it's about three hundred and fifty thousand a year.
So, when the town gets questioned again about this, because more and more dog, you just said it, union, three children got bit by a dog. It's gonna continue to happen, is the town's stance going to be, well, it's too much money?
No, it's, it's go talk to the district attorney, go talk to the judge. They're the ones who are not enforcing the fines, they're the ones who's allowing, you know, them to get off scot-free, basically, from getting served, and they'll side you.
Once, once these people start being held accountable, you'll see a change. When they're cited for five hundred dollars for a vicious animal and the judge and the D A actually prosecutes them for it and makes them pay that or sit in jail, you'll see a change. But until that happens. You can, you can pick up fifty dogs a day and you'll have fifty more the next day.
And the sheriff's doing that, their job on it.
There's no repercussions.
Cover from the courthouse, it's not.
I, I do it every day with code enforcement, it's the same stuff with the code enforcement right now. I could write a twelve hundred dollar ticket, I'll let them pay three dollars a month for the rest of their life and not tell them to clean their property.
That's the court.
That's the court and our D A, yes, and that's what's going on with the dogs.
That's what we need to have people go to the judge and to the D A and get it figured out.
And so what, as the town, will we tell people when they breed the dog issue up?
To go talk to the D A and judge.
Go talk to the D A and to the judge to start enforcing the laws.
I just sent two people over there over code enforcement because I've written tickets on a house and the judge let them pay five dollars a month and get an order to clean their house up. And the people are tired of looking at it, I sent them to go talk to the judge and D A because they will not enforce it.
Yeah. And maybe if they start hearing it, uh, and people find out that the judge and the D A are the ones who aren't enforcing it, then maybe the next election, that will change.
It's a long time to have that happen.
Yep.
This, this has been a fight title for a long time in this town, and the problem usually comes out to the same answer as the D A and the judge. Well, it's been fifteen years since Fratato left. Well, and, and, and till, until our court, until our court and our district attorney steps up and starts enforcing, enforcing these people to do what's right, they just keep going. Because there's no, there's no repercussions. And it might be some editorials, you might find some editorials in the paper and that kind of stuff. Um, I'm working on one with Barb Simpson pretty soon for the deer. But I got a meeting with John coming up next week. I've got some good information about the deer.
I'm just so happy because I, I have no heart strewns for the deer.
We can have a special hunt. Just goes, no, I'm serious. That's what they do.
I heard that that was, like, requested before, but then a whole bunch of other people came in and it was like.
Well, we have to sell.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the key, is, is selling, that's what I'm gonna talk to John about, what we have to do to sell that.
You just need to get people on board.
Right, and see, you can, you can order a special permit for like third and fifth street. And, and you hire two guys to cull the herd. And those two guys have bows and arrows and they shoot them. Then they take them out to the dump and skin them, or the, by the sewer pole, they skin them out there. And, and, and basically the meeting went to people. Answers.
I don't know if anyone would dare.
Well, that's what I asked you, that's, no, that's what I asked you. And he said, they're really good, other than the fact they look bad, because right now they're shedding so bad. But he said in another month, they'll look way better. Yeah, that's what he told me. Now, whether you believe it or not, I don't know, I wouldn't either.
Get on with this contract.
Okay.
So, um. Following that, uh, one point two is saying that if we need more, that we will give them reasonable notice if we would like to add another one. One point three is that the sheriff's in charge of all of the additional expenses, labor, supervision, materials, vehicles, equipment, blah, blah, blah.
Miss thirty-five thousand a, a guy in equipment?
It, um.
Was this the one that was at?
Yeah, we have.
You had the vest and everything, right?
Right, so we're saying we want you to include that with, with what we pay as a flat rate. Like, we don't want to come in and buy all this stuff, that's right, we're just saying we want you to have four deputies and one school resource officer, we handle the rest.
And if they have the money to get more.
So, um, and that they'll handle all the accounting, um, that they'll give us, uh, quarterly, uh, information for what the costs are. Um, and that we can, um, you know, within thirty days, the town can, um, make a request for reconciliation under its account. Um, and that the employee benefits are gonna be the sole responsibility of the, um, sheriff's office and the employment contract they have with either our labor union or the county. The compensation I left blank because, um, they have it as a month, a monthly compensation, we typically have been paying them per quarter. So we pay every quarter a certain amount of, you know, we divide that into a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what we pay them per deputy per year. Um, and we pay that on a quarterly basis, so one, twenty, whatever that is. So I kinda wanted to reconstruct, uh, redo that.
As a quarterly.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Now, I left open what you would like to do as an increase every year, or if you want to do an increase every year. Um, so that's, that's gonna be up to you, but I do think we need to configure it to have it just be a quarterly basis. So that it matches our accounting. Um, that they're, and, and a contractor.
Insurance.
Yep. So that they, um, the town will maintain insurance policies to, uh, uh, coverage for our municipal city, which we do.
Michelle, can I, it, it's kinda like, maybe, it's not other business yet, but it's kinda goes along with this. Do we have, do we have a deal set up where it would be, uh, deputy one, deputy two, deputy three, deputy four in years in increments? Like, on a piece of paper, or dispatcher one, dispatcher two, dispatcher three in years? Do we have anything like that? Okay, what, what I'd be willing to do is late in the summer or early in the fall, come in and work with whoever to develop some kind of program where we would have, uh, in, instead of hiring, I don't even know your name.
Doris.
Doris, like, for a hundred thousand, that we have some kind of deal as an entry level and then a three percent raise or, or, or a C P I or whatever. Or the same contract with you, or you, or Scott, or any of, any, any town employee, I'd like to develop something like that.
I would love you to develop that.
And the union does have.
The union has.
The stats, yeah, like that.
This is what I'm reading, wages of all the town employees.
Right. But I mean, but I mean, say, say Blake, Blake Kenny wants, wants a raise and he goes in and says, I'm not working for fifteen ninety-seven an hour, and you say, okay, I'll do the seventeen. I mean, there's not be a, kind of a deal where, where it's not that way.
And it, and.
That a guy could go to work and, and look and see that this is what I'm gonna make in five years, if I don't like it, I'm not gonna take the job.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It does, yes, and I like it, that, um, which is why I, I've left the, the compensation open. Um, some of the, uh, points of conversation and discussion could be for you is, do we want to pay a flat rate? Or, or do we want to know, um, within that flat rate, what are we actually paying for? So I, I've understood from the sheriff that the school resource officer is nine months out of the year, but we're paying for a whole year.
Well, I think that would be that that re, school resource officer needs to work a full year.
But does that get put in here?
Yes.
Or do we adapt to the sheriff to make?
Well, it works during school and then drives, drives a car in the summer when we need more people here.
Right.
Is that what you're?
Well, I'm saying. That they're in the parks and the.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
That they're working for the full year, but if they're not working the full year, we are only paying for the nine months.
Exactly.
In addition, another point of discussion is, do, we're paying right now for twenty hours of coverage, not twenty-four. So, does that make a difference in wages? Does that make a difference in the additional amount that we're paying? What, what does that mean, really? Because right now, we pay one twenty-five.
I think that.
If you go to twenty-four hour coverage, you're gonna add another deputy.
Yeah. Yep.
That's the reason why.
It's just schedule.
It's just a conversation point.
Yeah, is that, that was a conversation we had in the initial contract, to go twenty-four hours with, um, especially with taking one out for school resource, we based it on four deputies. And to go twenty-four hours, which none of the agencies in Lake County have twenty-four hour coverage, it will add another full-time deputy. O S P don't have twenty-four hour coverage and the county does not have twenty-four hour coverage.
So the, the question then becomes, with that data and the data that we know that we're getting more people coming, do we want to project into the future? Because I'd like this contract to be a five-year contract so I don't have to keep talking about it, like, I just give it to him and say, this is what we're doing for five years.
See it in five years.
Yeah, see it in five years.
Well, we might want to do three years, too.
Or whatever, but all's I'm saying is, the town's not gonna remain where it is right now, we know that. So, do we, do we want to consider paying, I don't know, what you guys want to do?
Well, if we were to have, have to add another deputy down the road, you know, whenever, because we have a spot in here for additional deputies. Could you put in something that says, if the town were to pay for an additional deputy, the expectation is there would be twenty-four hour coverage?
I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Or something like that?
I think that would be great, because we just want to make sure that we're, we're looking up here and.
And then like in twenty-four months, as needed or something?
Right, yeah.
I mean, put a clause in there that it could be renegotiated.
Re-negotiated, yeah.
So.
Yep.
And then with your stair, stair stepping of drop pay, does that consider if someone comes in with experience too, that you wouldn't place them right at the start?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if they got a college degree or they don't, or, I, I mean, I don't know.
Or say they're coming from another sheriff's department and they have four years, five years, whatever.
It would give them.
I know, like, like if a teacher, like, when I transferred in here, I, I had, um, ten years and I think District Seven doesn't give you any more than seven years to transfer in on the pay scale. So, I mean, there's all kinds of things you can do.
Yeah.
If you're a sher, if you're a seasoned sheriff, or like Sean comes here from Bend.
Yeah.
And he's worked up there for a bajillion years and he has all that stuff, yeah, you.
You give him, yeah.
You want it. You also have to consider what your bargaining unit is with the unit. Right. Whether the unit breaks it down also by what your pay scale is depending on your experience.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's why I said, I, I'd be willing to come in and sit and go through a lot of stuff, you know, for nothing. You know, because I'm not gonna work at school next year, probably. We'll see, yeah. Yeah. So, but that would be something I would like to.
That's something, yeah, something that's needed, definitely needed.
We need to get that.
Definitely needed. So the, for purposes of this, our contract expires two thirty, so what would you like me to do for the compensation piece with this?
I don't know how much she's making now.
We pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, for the sheriff too?
Per deputy, per deputy.
So, right, we're paying six hundred and twenty-five.
So, right, we're paying 625,000, right?
Yeah.
For the five. We're paying 625,000, or 525, what is it, per we're paying there? I'll tell you, just one second, okay? So we're paying. We're paying $756,000 to the sheriff's department.
Part of it was for equipment and that type of thing.
We pay, yeah, so.
We supplied them on the original contract, not today or two. But on the, on the original contract, we bought three pickups on the original contract. And then we also bought all the town deputies, all new equipment. New guns, new vests, new everything. I think vests have to be replaced every three.
Yeah, I think that's, last contract that, that was to dissolve, the town would get everything that we bought back.
Yeah, yeah, so if we go back.
I don't see it in here.
We get all the, all the vehicles, all the money that was spent on the deputies for the town, is all that equipment returned to the town.
So, so what is their, like, because they're union, right, the deputies are? So what is, what wage increase did they get?
I think they got 4% for sure, I'm not 100% sure.
We haven't paid any more than 125 per person for the two, three years that I've been here. So is, is that covering totally their wages or do we not?
Sure, because the sheriff gets that money and then if he's paying them 80,000 a year, and then they get a 4% increase. He'll just take some of that that's left of the 125 and apply that, and then he's got whatever left for equipment. So the 125 is, because this doesn't say specifically in here what the sheriff is paying them, he could be paying them 60 a year.
But yeah, it depends on where they are as far as.
Sure, no, I understand that, but that's, to answer your question, that 4% increase is well below 125,000.
Yeah, but if they're getting paid, I don't know what they get paid.
Yeah.
You know, but with benefits is what I'm.
They're, they're probably at 60 or 65, so if you figure benefits in, you're probably 110 to 125,000 here.
What is it, 20,000 for insurance? It's, it's 1,200 a month, isn't it? Probably 1,200, that's 12,000, that's 14,4. So probably 15,000 for insurance, right? Just insurance.
Right.
And then retirement, retirement is 6%.
And then their taxes.
And taxes, whatever.
They're probably right around 120, 125 right now.
I would say 125.
Yeah, depending on where their rank is as an officer, because that's what their, their pay scale's based on how they're ranked. And you get a, a one-year officer is obviously making the same as a 20-year officer. And that's all broke out in their collective bargaining agreement through the union and how that's based.
So, $756,000 is a lot if they need to outsource, is all I'm trying to say, is, um.
Well, let's leave it at 756,000 and then the county can always come back and say, no, we refuse. And we can ask them more information.
Well, if you ask me if it's 756,000 to keep you safe, I would say that's okay.
Okay.
I mean, to me, but I'm not everybody.
And also our budget with the, with the county and the sheriff's department on this is a standalone budget. So that money is not put into the sheriff's department and just disappears into their budget. They do a standalone budget that in the last contract can be altered at any time.
Well, they haven't given us that standalone budget, that's the issue, I think.
Are they not wanting to do it? Because the contract says they have to.
I had asked them.
They, they used, when I, when I was on council before, we would go over that every two or three months with, with Ann.
And Mike talked about, well, and Mike talked about that, but he said that Paul was the one who was keeping that monthly budget at the time, so.
So what, what I understood from the sheriff's department is that $95,000 of the 125 goes towards wages and retail. The rest goes into a fund that 30,000 per person goes into.
Bullets.
Bullets and vests and uniforms and.
A lot of bullets.
And, it is, it is, so there, there's. I would like to see more detail about what we're asking to see from the sheriff's department. That, that's all I'm needing to.
They should produce that. They should have no choice but to produce that.
But they, we're not purchasing, and so based on the three years that we have paid, the 125,000, and you take 30,000 and times that by three years, times five deputies, that's, that's a lot of money. And so what are we getting?
Is that cars and everything, though?
We, we bought them three pickups.
We've, we don't even know what we've bought actually, because Michelle has asked several times.
And, and just, and I finally just stopped and said, Charlie and Charlie, you guys take, you go. Because, um, you know, we, we need to know what's going on. Like, and, and if we don't want to, okay, it's up to you guys. But I think that $756,000 to go for, I mean, we're getting coverage, that's what we know, but that's all we know. So if that's all you wanna know, and you just want the sheriff's department to handle it, and handle the raises, and handle the insurance, and the purrs, and the retirement, and all that, then that's super groupie. But that's why we're having, you know, the work session, so that you can start thinking about what you want. But you can't think too long because we gotta get it past like the first week of June. And we're, you know, we're looking at the second week of May, that's what we're putting up the agenda now. And so it, it seems like a long way to go, but it's really not. So if you wanna make it easy, let's make it easy. If you wanna get more detailed, you need to let me know like sooner than later. So that we can make that deadline, so that we can stay within our contractual obligations and allow the sheriff's department to respond back. We need to allow them to respond back and just say, hey, no. And maybe it's just a call to Heather and say, hey, we need the budget of what you spent and how it looks. And then what, if we don't get it done, well, then we'll reduce the amount of money. We'll fi- we'll figure the budget ourselves.
Well, if you don't get it, I'd Jeremy write him a letter because they're in violation of the contract. Because it states in that contract that we will do, I think it's either 30-day or quarterly reviews of the budget. So we'll have Jeremy writing a letter demanding the, uh, accounting of our budget.
Yeah, okay, I will, because it's gonna make it much more helpful to determining how we're gonna put this.
Well, to make a decision, I would think.
We'll have them send, yeah, and maybe I can, kind of courthouse tomorrow, just go in and ask Ann for a copy of it. See what she says.
Because I know, Paul was doing the budget, that Ann actually pays the bills and maintains the financial stuff. And that's who was handling it in the beginning when we were going over it.
And they would keep them, they do so.
Well, it would be nice to know.
It's in a contract, it, it's a standalone budget.
It would be nice to know that a, a worker there gets $60,000 a year for, for out patrolling and the sheriff gets 95,000 a year, or whatever, that, that's what I would like to know.
This is the old.
So that's all broken down in a bargaining agreement.
This is the old contracts you have that.
And maybe, maybe you could get some of those bulletproof vests, the old ones for May 9th meeting at the fair. We could all wear them.
We all might need one.
Yeah, we could all wear those.
Right, so we do need to, um, be aware that we need to let the county respond to what our proposal is, you know, for negotiations. So if we have it by next Tuesday, we'll be fine, right?
We'll be fine.
Okay, I'm just letting you know that we're on a, um, we have a lot cooking and we're on a timeline for a couple of them, especially the 911.
Transfer.
And the law enforcement.
I'll see if I can't go to the courthouse tomorrow and I'll ask Ann for a copy of that portion of the budget.
Thank you, that would be very helpful so we can get. And then you have the old one to write contracts with some of the differences in, in this contract, and if you wanna add our pickups up fully. So we can add this to the work session on the second of May to allow you guys some time to get together and then we'll add it onto that agenda.
See, the only thing we've got in here is.
We're probably behind the eight ball on this because Jeremy probably should have.
Put on termination of the agreement from one of the individual.
He has, Jeremy has the old, Jeremy's got this, we've gone through it, the old contract. Jeremy and I have both been working, which is how we got to this point, the draft, okay? He's basically done the draft, of course, okay.
But there's, supposed to have been in there that all equipment and everything come back to the town.
What do you mean, the stuff that, that you guys bought?
The vehicles, the vests.
Why would we get that back?
We only get that back as if we terminate contract.
That's what I'm saying.
The officers that were hired for the town comes back to the town along with all equipment and vehicles.
Right, but we're not gonna do that, are we?
We can't afford to do that.
No, but I'm saying if it does happen, if they decide not to.
It says right there in section nine of the old contract.
What page?
Section nine of the old contract says all equipment will be returned.
Um, okay, I'm looking.
The last paragraph, page four.
Section nine, page four.
Last paragraph. In section nine.
Okay.
I'd like to have an old police car. You would just get in trouble.
Well, it'll make it easier if we have to rebuild our police department.
We're not going to.
No, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying if the county decides they don't wanna continue this.
Well, the county won't, I don't think they'll never decide that part, who knows?
Because you don't know day to day what they're doing.
I don't, I think sometimes for day to day, I don't know what I'm doing, so.
I know you don't.
Chasing my tail, are we?
Yeah, so that's all I have, and that's the end of our work session for what I have prepared. I really appreciate you and the time that you're giving to, to me and to these programs. Because I think putting in a place is gonna be really effective and beneficial for the town and county.
So when we meet Tuesday, we can go over this, right?
That's correct. And, and hopefully we can wrap this up and get it to a formal, a final draft to take through council.
Right.
Sounds good.
Okay, anything else?
Time for a nap.
Starting now, we have a meeting at 7:10.
Thank you so much.